At 5:30, I would like to bring the Community Economic Development Committee to order. Starting off, the chip grants, and this is to accept and appropriate the chip grant. It consists of home funds, CDPG funds, and Ohio Housing Trust funds in the amount of $1,050,000. We have already approved for MBS to apply for the grant. This will be for other occupied housing, realizations, and other occupied home repairs. Is there any questions?
You're indicating the grant has been approved and awarded for the $1,000,000.
Yep. And then there are some required RLF funds that are also going into the funding, and it is a partnership with the City of Vavenna, Streetsboro, and Portage County.
How much is Vavenna money?
We will have-
It's a two-year contract?
It's a two-year contract, and I would have to look up the specifics on the time. Yes.
Two fifty or three hundred thousand?
I think it's three hundred, roughly, for the city.
Pretty much what it's been.
Yeah. Probably about fifteen years now. Any other questions? The next item on the agenda is the MOA with the Ohio State Historic Preservation Office, and this is in regards to the Sloman Blake property at 218 West Main Street. Mr. Bogo, would you like to speak as to-
As part of the government review and the State Historic Preservation Office review of the property, we get to coordinate with the state, as well as the National Council of Historic Preservation and the Portage County Historical Society. And the MOU just represents the agreement between all the parties on the action we're going to take to memorialize the building upon its demolition. There's really two main things that we're committing to, and that is a historical marker that will have to have specific language approved by the state regarding the building. And fixing up Lino's wall, which will be exposed, obviously, once we take it down. We don't know yet exactly what the primary area will be, we'll find out. So it's relatively benign approval.
And just to clarify, this is not because it's a historic property, but because the property is located in a historic district?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make that clear.
Yeah.
So, any questions?
Just for clarification, the action is to authorize the mayor to sign-
The MOA agreement with the state and all the parties that are involved.
Okay. No, that's good. And there's going to be a plaque of some sort that would-
There will be a plaque.
We have to work it out with the language with the state office. Like Cheryl said, it's not really historic building anymore. So it looks like we're going to memorialize the 1930-40 Art Deco structure. And we go to a historic store at that time. So it consists of- We'll get the story straight, and they have the committee to say a yes. And then you have to agree on what you say. And then I'm actually, that would be, obviously, well, right.
I do have one more question. You know, the mural that's going to be taken down today? I know the first architect that did a lot of time and effort was into that. I was wondering, is there any way that you could take a picture of that and have it almost displayed? You know how people can, like, load things up and make, like, a smaller version of the mural? I don't know if there's anything that we can do to kind of preserve that picture that he drew, or, you know, that he worked on, and have, like, a, you know, like a fluxed glass type thing, where you could have it enclosed, or something there to still have, you know, that representation there.
I made the assumption, and you're correct, that what did that, that track, if you're doing it on new walls that are exposed, there's a fact that one thing we talked about was, rather than, and again, I'm not speaking to the building owner. I don't know what the building is about, you know, whether it does, or approves it or doesn't approve it. But we had talked about storing that wall with material that will make easier to do, or place it there. Since we got that whole time thing, and there's all that now. So my assumption was that we could re-memorialize that wall. It doesn't necessarily mean that what we're talking about is true, but I assume that the same year or different year will come back.
I just go back to that it was done not too long ago, and I know a lot of time and effort went into that. And it would be nice if somehow we could preserve that memory somehow, you know? So that was awesome.
I just, I know this is kind of cart before the horse, but do you know the archway that's there currently? Where that's up, is that going to stay?
Yes.
Is there, okay, so that's not moving, the building's coming down, that archway stays?
As a matter of fact, we know the archway, we're very preliminary into the design of the building. We've kind of figured out, could we do something spreading to be something basic, close, yeah, we open the alley, it's always there. There's a group of stakeholders that are not, and they're only, and that's called meetings. And as of right now, if we never go away, if anything, if there's money in there, maybe they would change their location or make wider to fit into the, I'm not sure, long way over there.
Okay, thanks.
A question about the arch, though. The existing arch, once the building's removed, the pole supporting the eastern part of it would drop down right into the newly opened space. You know, you got to hold it up on something on that side.
Yeah.
So would that be incorporated into the plan? Or would that limit the plan on how the plan could be developed? Because we have to drop the three poles down into the middle of it.
We, we, in the preliminary, we put it for, in the plan. Right now, there's going to be green space and public space in front and parking in the back. So the first, the first arch is no issue whatsoever. And that arch is coming forward in the later department to design so far. It's preliminary, and we should be up there.
I just wouldn't want, I just wouldn't want the arch to be a controlling factor in how that space is developed and planned, just to save the arch.
I'm good.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions, comments? The next item on the agenda is authorization to appropriate funds for Rayanne Parkway. So the UDAG RLF funds that were utilized, we approved it six weeks ago, and those have actually been recaptured. And so since we had already agreed to utilize those funds for this project, Mr. Finney's done a great job of grants and getting the roadway mostly financed. So if needed, the UDAG funds would be utilized for the remainder of the financing to get Rayanne Parkway in place. If it's not fully needed, then the UDAG would be the first ones not used. Any other comments, Mr. Mayor?
We have to appropriate all of the money. This is the grants we have covered in bulk. All grants that, like, relax, you have to invest your money, you present the bills to them, they pay you. And quite honestly, we would be using capital improvement funds for that with UDAG on top. And those that, funds that we have to cover. And they would be the first, UDAG would complete the job on that. But what we're asking for there is just to incorporate the money. We'd like to send out for this in the middle of February, and we have to show the money that's available.
Do we have to break down all the files?
We do.
Okay. Can you-
I think, I think they're in the-
Is it all CI or are we using any PAV?
No, we're, no, so the, the total project cost, the total project cost is somewhere around $900,000. We've got a little over $100,000 in grants. And the grants do not cover water and sand. But the grants are going to cover road, they can cover swamps. We will not use any payment for this road at all. The UDAG can't cover water and portion it.
And CI will cover that as well?
Well, so CI is going to, overall, we're going to pay for the project, so we get reimbursed in three years. Once the grants reimburse us, then it will happen with CI.
Or back with UDAG.
And, you know, if it's a UDAG, well, yeah.
Okay. Because I'd like to see it returned to UDAG before CI handles it and unregistered it.
Well, CI is pledged to some other places down the line, other departments.
And we, once, once we open this, we're going to have a better idea of exactly what's going to happen. And now we're making our decision.
Any other questions, comments? Is that, is this a new question regarding where it comes from, or? Any, any questions regarding the project or the funding?
I'll summarize funding to me.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is brownfield grant. And this actually came up very quickly. It does have a grant deadline of January 31st. So we're kind of pushing a lot like we do for the fire department grants. We have the grant deadline hitting before, before council meeting. This is a brownfield grant to remediate the old engineer's site on Cleveland Road. ABS has the purchase of the office before us and are willing to apply for it. So this is just for the nominee approval to apply for it, giving the mayor approval to sign for the grant application.
Yeah, I guess, when did they start doing brown building, and was that-
Just recently.
Okay.
The issue is actually, we, we, the, of commercial residential structures, and then this new brownfield. The only, the eligible applicants for this, it's just about anybody. But the city has to, either you have to have an MOA to work with the city on your hand, or the city to do that one. We're still trying to draw that out. We did get a letter from Mark, his own thing, to be in the city, have approval for any act that's being. Unfortunately, the studies, Phase One, Phase Two studies are no less than nine years old. Which means we have to do, you know, round one comes in January 31st, trying to get this finished as possible. Got the quotes from Certified Professional, EPA, boundary action program. So the grant amount request for Phase One, you know, call that, is going to be ninety-five-ish thousand. So, which are, new phase one, and then a Phase Two, once it just starts, that nature. There's still a bunch of them over there. And then we would go right back in, March 1st, clean up. We were going to go clean up, but unfortunately, studies, the Phase Two is two thousand two. The low.
I, well, I think it would be a benefit that the white rubber was done in Brownfield, too, which is right down the road, a little bit farther down.
Yeah.
That they used, I remember, I was here when they used the brownfield on that, so.
The difference this time is that, throughout the state, every county did a million dollars. The quarter seven was a million bucks to be with. Everything else, including that, is first one for served, but Portage, if there are enough applicants, would get at least a million dollars. And that's huge.
Yeah.
And we would be ready to get it in, so that we're all in the first line for that money. After July, whatever business bank goes into the pot, anybody who will, from the state. But a million dollars, that's pretty impressive, and we can have not spend it for a year or two. So we're optimistic. Came out with the rest of the program, realized this is also available, kind of with mayor, and the rest of the government. We're going to work with committee on the test of the ordinance that we showed before. Or, again, you apply, you administer, we're going to figure all that out, for that.
I'm excited to see what happens. That would be very beneficial for you. Yeah. Any more comments, questions, concerns? Um.
It, it could be an after the fact approval, as long as general consensus is to go for it. Unless somebody's adamantly opposed to us obtaining a brownfield grant, they could go ahead and submit the application, just similar to what Mr. Capel's, what fire department grants.
Anything else? All right, next item, designated outdoor refreshment area, the DORA, for the downtown area. And this is, we've discussed this a lot, and it is now back on the agenda. We have received numerous letters from different downtown businesses that feel that this would definitely benefit their businesses, as well as the foot traffic in downtown, especially during events. And this is something that I think we definitely need to take some serious consideration to, and listen to some of our business owners and their thoughts on it. I do know that there are some here tonight. Is there any questions or comments before we have anyone speak?
Oh, go ahead.
Have we decided who's going to oversee this? Is this something that we were talking about that Main Street has-
I think right now, if we decide yes or no on the DORA, and then go to Main Street and ask them, would they be able to implement it, you know, similarly in other cities? Then at least we make the decision, yes or no on the DORA, and then it's up to them whether or not they implement the wristbands, the cuffs, all of those.
Yeah, I just wondered if they, anyone that has come forward on that part of it.
Well, they, they brought it to us before, so I'm assuming that they would still be interested in having this under their-
Then we own, the city owns the door.
Right. So we would be able to install a morgue atrium if there were issues, or if there was a reason that we didn't need to have it. I don't think we should start it out as wide open. And that's just my opinion. But I do agree with the events that are downtown. I think that it's a great opportunity for the businesses and for people to stay during those events.
My comments were that when this came up before, I wasn't sure the city was ready for it. And in looking at the, and I've noticed all the documentation from, mostly from Main Street is the same as before. But I'm not sure if people recognize, I know the mayor talked about this, the state laws have changed, and it's a lot easier. Before, we required, we required we have four business owners, bars, restaurants, now it's only two.
We've got interest.
Yeah, it seems like we've got more than the interest.
We've got more than four of it.
And we've got a development on Sycamore Street that could certainly enhance the need for a door. At this point, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I questioned the length of it, especially as far east as it was proposed originally, all the way down to, say, the English Pub, which didn't seem to be interested in it. But at this point, that's fine. My only question, though, is a technical one, I didn't see a tracking sheet for it, so.
This was brought on as discussion. This is something that was brought on last minute, and we didn't want to not add it to the agenda.
Okay. But I mean, is it coming up for a vote in February?
I would like to move it forward for a vote for council this month.
Done before screening starts.
And add that, I mean, we can always supplement a tracking sheet tomorrow, if everybody was interested.
I think before you go for a vote, though, don't we have to decide exactly what the area is going to be on it? Because like your comment of, should it go all the way down to where the English Pub is?
Right.
Should it just be the historical district only, should it stop there?
Yeah. And we also have- Still the historical district there.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I don't know if it goes that far, pretty close.
It goes to London.
Pretty close, but if the English Pub goes south, you know. But anyway, that's-
And the, and the dates, too. You know, it's one question whether we approve it for all days, all times, or just events only. And I think we'd have to be clear on that as we move forward.
Yeah, I think it does require a little more discussion.
Definitely.
Conceptually, I'm in favor of it now, more so than I was then. So, and I know we have some visitors here from West Main Street, and I've, I've been there, and it's a wonderful facility. I think this kind of initiative helps these kinds of-
I think it will help the whole city.
Yeah.
I've seen what it's helped, and, you know, mortgage companies, mortgage companies, they want to, they're, they're going to. The thing with the DORA, you have a granted, you go about a half mile square for this coverage. Okay, you can figure out, you do have to know what to, to what street, because we do have to figure that out. Because the thing I'm here for is to get a talk session, because I know that we talked about it before, and it's not going to be done. So now we've got to talk about again, especially after this. Because this isn't just going to help you, or help each media, it's going to help everyone. The mortgage companies have their own board, mortgage companies are going to want to do. As example, remember the Christian, probably, the Bearfold team, Eric, Danny, the young little Bearfold. They all, all the businesses that come in, they fill up our, they're, they're, that's only going to be, well, every, 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 people who's waiting to take it. Over there, like, we do. There's so much more to do, and that's why I'm, I'm totally supportive of the board. And as you said, you don't have to go there, you can start out a special event, so it's not a going to go bad. It's fair, but any special event, like, play, you do have a special play, you deny, you try, we are people that do, that we are.
Thank you very much.
I think this is-
You should have all found it in your packets, because I know Chelsea copied the, the information on the Garrettsville. When I saw that, we were trying to think about it in terms of Kent, and that's not the, that's not the model for us. By the way, it's laid out in Garrettsville, I think it looks very efficient.
Yeah, but it's more our side.
Yeah.
And I do think it's very important here, it's pretty, um, um, um.
I agree. And I think it's a great thing that we can limit, and monitor it as a city. We can establish it, and I said if there's, you know, an issue with it, we can put a morgue atrium on it, we can set limits as far as location, we can set limits as far as whether it's just for events, or expand it down the road, but it is a start. It's a step in the right direction.
So do you want to do, like, a work session to talk, you know, about this more, and come up with stuff to bring, to continue for maybe, maybe next month's meeting, so it doesn't get lost? And so that we're, you know, maybe have a work session with some of the business owners and-
We can do that.
I think that's a great idea. I think we have a valuable resource in some of the business owners.
Because I do think that we owe it to at least the pub to reach out and find out, are they interested in being involved in it? I don't want to just assume, or take it upon ourselves to eliminate a business from that, if we feel that it would benefit them. I know it's a little further out, but-
I don't think we were taking that just without information on the survey that was done. They were one of the respondents.
But I just think we ought to double check, to reach out.
They gave several reasons why they weren't interested in being-
They're, they're distance from downtown area, but I don't want to, in a just a seminar, but I think a work session would be very-
Hearing, hearing from Main Street, too, might be important, if they're implementing this. And then in terms of process, like you're talking about, one of the questions that will be asked, that can be at the whole for many of the items, is, is it an emergency? And then we can decide, you know, moving on to the regular meeting, if it's on the agenda, we can leave it. And then we have, you know, consecutive months to decide and figure out some details.
Yeah, there are some logistical things. Unless the code has changed, we have to have an ordinance that discusses a specific public health and safety plan, and it itemizes what those things are, as well as the sanitation part. So, I mean, it's not just the simple, we want to do it or not, we're going to have to do a little homework on-
Well, yeah, I'm not pushing that desire, I think it's just making a decision.
No, I agree with your approach. You can put it, push it forward and keep it there, so we don't lose track of it.
Okay. My question, well, a couple things, is I realize this is primarily for alcohol, but my question is, would this include things where you could buy food and take them, okay?
This is just about-
Okay. The only reason I said that is because it looks like I misunderstood part of it, where it said for refreshments. So that's why I was just asking about food by itself.
Yeah, it's true, refreshing.
Okay. Well, I've always thought of refreshments over the years as a variety of things that you could eat.
Refreshments are one of the things.
Okay. Well, I'll say it this way, it could be an interpret, an individual interpretation.
If you want to do a joint work session, since some of it will, I may have to do some stuff with public health and safety, I'm happy to help.
Okay, thank you.
And there's, there's only a handful of people, or so, I better rephrase that, businesses, that told me that they are against it, and they're not businesses that serve anything to drink. They're the type of businesses that do counseling, or, okay, so you know our-
Well, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but thinking of, it's an opt-in thing, no business is forced.
No, what I'm saying is, they have commented to me, they're against it because a lot of their clients have either gone through AA or things like this, and then they're going for additional counseling. But I just wanted to mention that because they wanted, when I spoke to them some time ago, they just wanted me to give the comments of that nature.
I think one of the things with this is, is we see this as this giant park that we're going to be having downtown, and that's really not what it is. I mean, I've been to downtown Garrettsville enough where you don't even notice that it's there. I mean, certainly at events, it's going to be different, right? So, one of the balloon affair, Art on Main, and those kind of things, a large amount of people. But for me to be able to take my cider and walk down, you know, window shop, it's, it's not like we're having, you know, vans and stuff in the middle of the street. So I think the perception of it is seen a little bit differently from some people. I don't think, I think those businesses, those council businesses, those ones that are open just during the day, are not going to notice as much.
Anything else? Management updates?
I think it's done fine.
Well, thank you. Well, I will call meeting at 5:59 PM. Okay. It is almost six o'clock, but 5:59 PM. And I- And I am going to call Public Health and Safety Committee. We have several items on the agenda this evening. So I'm gonna try to get through this, some of the smaller ones, we're going to be at 5:00 PM. So I have a party where one of the ones that we want people to show up for. The Sweet Lock donation for fire department. They've given before. It's something, it's basically us accepting the donation. What was the amount of that? A thousand dollars, that's what I thought. I was afraid to say, but a thousand for each. Two thousand, fire department, thousand, man's side, a thousand. So there's no match, no return. It's just a donation that we're very grateful that they did for every year. Okay, second item is agreement between UH and the City for Medical Training Program. This is a law, this is an agreement with Mayor to sign with University Hospital to provide paramedic students to be able to ride along. With, um, the, with a renter buyer. So it is a benefit because like Chief Chappell said, you know, he is able to do recruiting possibly when they do ride along with them. It's also an extra pair of hands and helping in different things that they're able to help with. There is an open-ended insurance policy right now with UH. Our law director is just questioning a couple of things, but other than that, there is no match, no cost to the city. It's a benefit. Does anybody have any questions? I think this would be a wonderful opportunity.
Has not done this before?
We've done something like it before, yeah. Okay.
They do sign it, it's fine, do they not? Mr., our law director, when he checked the contract, changed one part in it where he wanted them to put people that wrote on it on their insurance. They had the same agreement with everybody and they will not change it. It's a long cloud. I think as long as we have this disclaimer, it's a good thing for us to go ahead and do. And I told Frank that I would mention this.
Yeah, I agree.
When it came up so that everybody on board, and he understands that we would have weathered that way with the disclaimer. He felt that protection for the city, that they, under their insurance, they do not think that these contracts are in a lot of places.
Great, this is something that's standard. They've done it before like this. I just think it's, he's just trying to be extra cautious, but there's no reason why. But Mayor said that we should not be worried for this. I agree. Okay, third item on the agenda is the Sabre Grant. And we have had a lengthy discussion on the Sabre Grant. We have seen all of the information that has been brought to us. We've had opportunity to reach out to the fire department. We've also had opportunity to reach out with Brian, the Chiefs, and to discuss this. We have had several members of council that have done that and have been able to physically see what's going on and be able to ask questions. We are adding new businesses to our downtown or to Ravenna and in Ravenna City. We're growing very quickly actually. Everything comes to the core with what we're planning and what is about to happen. And, you know, we need to be prepared that our public health and safety, our police and our fire department is well set up. Currently, our fire department does more calls than a lot of the other departments. The job titles as a fireman is much more than what a fireman in another city would do. Our firemen do everything. They don't just, you know, do the fires and do the calls. They have a number of things that we do. We did approve a fire marshal. Unfortunately, we can't really fill that position right now because if that position was done internally, they would become another guy. We have other departments that are reaching out to our men, wanting them to come to them. They are not having to do as much work in other departments. I know that at one point, we had talked about all of the two people with the Sabre Grant. But at this point, after discussion and after seeing, you know, putting up a pros and cons, we want to move forward with F three. I think that three is a number that we have a better chance in getting. Three is a number that would help all these shifts and.
Well, and I want to, you're on roll, so let's just keep going.
No, go ahead.
The papers document, you said, sent over from 2009, correct me if I'm wrong. But that said, a minimum of three more in 2009.
It's an additional two to three people per department.
Basically, the key takeaway, we're not.
I was gonna say no plenty of services, Chief.
What do we have now?
Be on tape.
Four minimum.
So this is the six, I'm just trying to figure out what we're talking about, is it a six man minimum?
Well, they want a eight man, we're talking about minimum. Six man, those would be a state.
And we're saying four now.
We have four now.
The, uh, the Patriots grant, Phase One study, I think that was really good that it was shared with us. And it was very interesting reading, 165 pages of it. That was before, that was before the addendums. And, and so, very interesting. A lot of the discussion was of the Phase One report was also about consolidation and fire district and the advantages of doing that. And in each of these areas, they did a real analysis of fire department needs, et cetera. Under the staffing, the analysis of the staffing that they did, as I read it, and I may be misinformed as how I read it. They analyzed staffing under three different dimensions. One was the firefighter per thousand residents. The second one was the HR model of 1.5 firemen for each position that was there. And then the, and the third way was an analysis based on the national fire standards. And they looked at it. Their analysis showed that on two of the three methods, the current staffing, as I read it, the current staff would give a minimum of four on each shift method requirements. And so that was just interesting to see that on the middle one, the 1.5, is the one where they recommended the additional staffing. So, yeah, yes, the way it was written, it was recommended, but under different analysis, there were different views of it.
And then COVID wasn't a factor. Yeah.
COVID should not be a factor now.
It's not going to go anywhere.
Well, I mean, unless we're, unless we're gonna sit here and decide tonight, COVID is here to stay. We shouldn't be planning expansion of.
There are things that have changed since that study.
I don't look at it as.
A lot of things have changed since that.
I don't look at it as COVID.
No, I'm not either.
To rationalize.
Right, I'm using the fact that that was from 2009 and we're in 2022 now. And we have a lot more residents and we want to continue to grow our population. We have more businesses.
Yeah, I don't know if we have, I don't know about population.
It's the same if not.
But we're, we're, look, we've talked positively, optimistically tonight about COVID and I get that. I'm in favor of the grant application. My question has always been what the right number is.
I, I feel like three is going to even it out and lessen the overtime more so than two.
Yes, there's no doubt about that, that will be a big change with the overtime. And not only that, it will also probably, I'm not saying relieve duties, but relieve stress by having one more firefighter per shift. And the other reason I'm saying that, I'll say something else along with that, because there should be one, not two. It's a station all the time. And then when you're, if the numbers that they are now, quite often, that's not feasible because all of them are out on one type of call or another.
Paul, when I stopped out on Sunday morning, there was no one at the station because they were all, and obviously with the weather and those kind of things, but there was no one there.
And see, that's, I called, I refer to that, this is my own phrase, a big drawback, when there are times when nobody is there.
Well, when there's 107 calls that, within our own city, that other places are responding to, and we're losing that money because we have to pay those other cities that are coming into our city, taking our own residents. 107 calls is a lot of calls for that.
And I just want to add on to that. Over the last year, I have heard more compliments on our fire and EMS from different residents of the young men who have come into someone's home and showed them the care and respect that they felt like other times, maybe they didn't get as much or, you know, things like that. The quality of care is just as important in the responses. And I've heard nothing but great things about our fire department. And with that, I do think that we need to do what we can to help keep the great gentleman and maybe someday who else that will help out work there. Right now, I want to get this out of committee and I want to push it forward to finance. I want to hear from Matt Parker on this. Do you have any questions or are you here for Rob?
Yeah, I just love it from what you say, not a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I am in favor of applying for the grant as well. Just like Rob, what's the right number? I think, I think three, in my opinion, would be the right number for going to apply for it. I know that changes the dynamic of finances, which again is a huge concern. And just out of curiosity, I know there's been a lot of talk about firemen leaving, being tempted to leave the city. Have we had anybody in the last 12 months leave because of better opportunities?
Good, I don't know if I got it, Brian. Brian, can you stand up and say who you are? Can you stand up and say who you are anytime it's someone's call, sorry. And anytime there's a test taken, there is worse for the loss.
And at this point, these guys are doing the maintenance vehicles that order all the supplies, the hard, the ordering supplies for the EMF. It goes this long list of things that they're doing that other departments are not doing. Because when we cut back in 2007 to a part-time secretary, that took, someone had to still do all that work. So these guys took it on. Well, now there isn't, no secretary, so they're doing. Yeah.
We are, we do it every week. We do it ten parts a day, every Thursday. So this guy, you know, he's allowed to do that. We're the first year.
Absolutely.
We try to avoid a lot of group. So you can take the six, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Uh, is a question, isn't it true though, according to the Phase One report, that two-thirds of our calls come in between 9A and 9P? And that that is the time that we have the heaviest uses of our calls? The, that's, that's what was reported at that time.
I respect, I respect it. Keep in mind, and so you spoke before, it is also looking at a call volume that this is our call.
They were, they were just saying that's what it was based on, based on the information. I, I guess the only comment is, is the staffing need the greatest during that A to P set, uh, session? You know, that's, that's a question.
I think in addition, the nine calls per day, and I'm trying to point to this that you provided me with all this, the questions, there's a lot of good information here that we've somewhat covered. You know, in terms of the data entry and the extra, can I share?
Sure. I think we're gonna answer a lot of 1710.
1710, and then if you could cover, you know, the overtime, you know, the numbers.
So, so here's, NFP, I guess, 1710 is a big threat in that is the staffing. With 17, and I have a, I have it here, I can make a copy of it. 1710 recognizes, first off, they don't take this lot of personnel into it. However, if you want it as a counter, it's, it's, it's not, it's the desire to try to get there with, with, with adding staff, making sure that we're called on with the personnel resources we have. So when we're full staffed, I'm basically a four guy, a four man minimum, which is, we ran all the numbers, roughly 63% of the time, we have four personnel. On that 63% of the time, that the fourth personnel, or 56% of that, they, that squad is out, leaving only two guys at a time. When you look at what the standard says, we're supposed to have a decent four personnel responding to the person we need. Even with three guys, we've got our staffing for the four man minimum, we're not here to number that NFP, but it's four to me. But these were the stuff in the right direction to get there. And that's, that's the world we're, we're striving for. We can't run engine calls or back truck calls, which is two guys at a time, if it's six, seven times. I mean, a good, a good example is just, our squad was out, two guys out, we had three of us there, the only three of us there. And so we had one guy running a call, but two guys trying to forehold it. You may be trying to fore, two and a half minutes, or some of you guys want to have things at the center. A two and a half minutes, holding by yourself, throwing the water, or one guy to run a call. It's, it's absolutely impossible. It's asking for injury, additional property loss, et cetera.
And the death possible.
Right, I mean, don't we say that's not possible? You know, we have, it's just what we want, but it is what it is now. The next situation is not, this guy is working, we're at, trying to take it, you know. That's the, for, for our people, we're always, we need, we need to be.
Can you speak a little to the overtime and if you were to increase from?
So if we, but I ran into a bunch of those cases out of the way.
Approximately.
So with simple overtime, mercy calls, obviously, the more people we have on stage, the more calls we can handle, the resources up there. So if I want five mansions, or four mansions, or five mansions minimum, I can still allow the two people to call off, two people to be off in supplement overtime, on vacation, holidays, downtime, rough. If somebody would be off sick, we'd have to, which is very important. Or if somebody would be like personally, if you have the minimum, if they have four, I wouldn't have the back. I'm not saying four mansions, but we're already practicing that. It's a given game. So I'm saying we could have five, and still have to save all the time that we got off this field. But I wouldn't back go for a creation of a personal day if we call off.
Is all the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You finished?
Not all the overtime system should.
I guess that's one of the questions, that's the.
And then, have we kept statistics on this past year of the number of shifts in which we had to call in that fourth person for overtime? Do we have that number?
Twenty twenty, not twenty twenty one, for the year.
Okay, you don't have it on twenty, okay.
I haven't had a chance to come over there, but I could.
That amount would be an interesting thing to see, how many times we had to do that.
Absolutely, yeah. I think, because the data is very important.
Looks like in 2020, it was just under 100,000, probably, shift filled.
Yeah, and, and I was interested in which shifts and the number of times that it happened also.
Well, it's honestly, the cause of, if you got, this year, I had a guy hand up his surgery.
Yeah.
Another guy had a knee replacement.
Yeah, I understand.
It's not like bigger states, and then, you know, we also, new people around to try to offset all that. So if I have two people off, one shift there, both injured, I'm already at my minimum staff. So I got eight from one shift, lose somebody else to another shift, to offset the numbers, I can't have overtime every day.
Anytime you're working with a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week shift, you're going to have constant changes, it's not going to be consistent, you know, one month they do this way, so it's, I understand, it's hard, it's hard.
You also have to look at the reduction of the risk of injury. We have more people working, in a more safer environment, that are safer environment, the less risk of injury we have. We have patients that are in our municipality, five, six, seven, hard time. Four guys can't let the setup hard on person. We do it, but we also get hurt.
Right.
We have resources on station, they're there. And I understand, we have, you're hearing, they're going off, our, they have no way to call on us. If everybody's drawn to you, you're paid to call.
Yeah.
The only thing we can do is responsibly try to address our situation in our own means, and that's in our own staffing, what we're.
And I've always said, you know, our safety forces need to be strong. Yep. And we have a great police department, we do have a great fire department, they have been cut short for the years and have had to work more with less. And I know with even some of the, what Christina said, with the data entry work, they do not have time to even think about doing that right now with the call volume that they have and the bodies they have. So there's stuff that needs to be reported to the state that has to be done in a timely manner.
Right, I have to clear the multiple questions today, because I have one question. We had two, one of them, I was talking, I talked on one, the second call was about two people, the other four, now they have new staff. Today, I came from home to drive the ambulance while they're doing CPR.
Yeah, they couldn't even call me today.
The first slide, the first slide goes out, you send the staff, you have four people. Two people left to guard the whole city, fire, EMS, and I don't know what was it. We knew about general alarm, we stayed, so we could call, but basically, perfect scenario, they, or some of them, they lost. Four, initially, so.
I did, I did them all.
Those guys are all, two people, I think like five, six people do a four. And, they lost.
Right.
So here's, here's our question, we go back to where we moved the staff, and more longer number than, than what's been all the time, last year, was 44 this entire year on that call. We'd be more longer with this, if we stepped to the base of students, 29, four man minimum, which roughly ran about 1,800 calls. And the 1,800 calls is about time before, we need that second call, you know, Amy Dwyer was coming in here, run the rhythm, that's the call, be accurate, yeah, that's the call, or four fires. Because Amy Dwyer's going to take at least 10 minutes to begin, that's the time shift. And, all of a sudden, okay, so, here's the part we, if you roll the dice on, the second call, when you went out to the, there'd be a great chance that you might have one person or two people. There's a big difference between that call with five minutes and the twenty minutes.
This is, you are reporting, this is the number only, for the way you do it, because no force can be, we're, we're all in the, we're taking it back. So this was based on the first 18 hours of call, that's one that we, our ambulance turnaround time, was the time we stayed in the call, was the time we cleared the hospital, 54 hours. That's not true, this is effectively, this is not a community, that could be, that's why the house service, for more than half an hour. And that's including, the transport worker, must sign off, so many people. This is, I think, all the data is calculated from the, from the, from the.
Not to say the mental English that goes after.
Right.
A full arrest, can tell tired, you are not just physically, but mentally, after working on a full arrest, so.
Or a lot of the other emergency scenarios that they have to come upon and treat people for. I just feel like one of the things that's, the fire department, the police department, those are two of the most important services that literally are life or death for our residents. And if it means adding a person to each shift of the staff, I would vote yes right now.
Can I talk?
Yeah, you're in the committee, let's go.
You guys, you guys had me 20 minutes ago. I understand the need, believe me, and everything people are saying is true, but the discussion tonight is, what can we afford? And so my question is simple, because this is, this topic is not about adding people, this is about applying for a grant. So let me ask this basic question, and I want an honest answer. If we don't get this grant, are we going to hire three firefighters?
And that's what I was going to say, but.
Because if we're not, we shouldn't be applying for a grant.
Because that pie comes back to you, and I'm not going to be small.
Yeah, no.
We can't do this with a self, you know, what are we going to do with that?
Yeah, no.
I hope we're very discussing that, we need staff.
At that point, then.
And I think we all agree on that. The bigger question is, what are we going to do with all this?
At that point, council has to sit down and look at the budget and see where we can pull funds from.
But my point is this, if your discussion is we have to do this, then my point is we have to hire three new firefighters, regardless of the grant.
Right.
That's what, so.
The grant is a bust right now, the grant is a bust.
If, if we get it, but, but I don't know if anybody's answered my question, are we all going to agree, if this grant does not get approved, we're going to go ahead and hi- hire three firefighters?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm glad you brought it up.
I think that we need to.
And, and, I mean, I'd like to hear your, I mean, you are the head of the safety force.
Sitting here, not one of you was here when we were laying them off.
If that's why.
Because there was no money. And you will not want to be here if we get in that spot again, because it is ugly. It is absolutely ugly.
I hear you, but there was also in this grant, in the paper study, there was also all kinds of recommendations of ways that we could possibly save some money. I mean, maybe those are some things that we need to take a look at to see if we can.
Know that the rest of the city looks at the fire department. Fire department sets the standard and sets the way.
Yes, they do.
But, but if someone, if someone's at a business.
I am not speaking against the three, the three people. But you need to understand, when, if this falls apart, you, you won't want to be sitting in these chairs. You absolutely will not want to be sitting there. I think that Brian has looked through this, and I've looked through it, and I think, the reason I, one of the difference between hiring three now or getting the, the grant, with some of the economic development that we have coming, we will be realizing additional funds. But it's going to be a two or three year period for things to get built and things to get up and running, these things. And I see that as being able to offset the cost. The, the cost of this, of adding, of Brian, you guys saw it, it was handed out, and I think we can handle that.
Okay. So my, my, so, in defense, if you can push me over, just answering one question, I already asked, if we don't get the grant, are you committed to hiring three firefighters? In spite of not having the extra funding?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and do this, keep in mind that since I came in, we've already added one. I told them we'd bring it up to the standard that we just have, and we did that, right? It's rather like, yes.
So, you're good to go?
We're okay for a while, and I know, they not only had that issue to deal with, but when we were near bankruptcy, nobody was getting raises, even trying to catch this up in the last two times.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we'll have another opportunity, as we'll be negotiating in September, for, I have to look at it, how it affects the whole city. I am the same way. I have never gone out and said a bad thing about our fire department or anything. I think we're very fortunate, we've got good people with that, and I'd give them as much as I possibly can. But I will not, if I knew for a fact it was going to take me to two years from now, and I could do that, I can write the crest and say how wonderful I am. But I still have to, I don't want to leave the next guy in with a mess, because I, I had one when I started. And how did we solve that problem? We had to get more money from the hall.
And we hired everybody back, and they got it.
We have.
I remember that, that meantime, when those cuts were made, and I'll agree with you, it was, it was bad during that time span. And Cheryl's comment about the public looks at that, if businesses are going to come in, they'll look at that. I mean, to see what those two departments, how they're staffed and.
That is the number one thing that, not only residential, but also commercial businesses.
Yes.
The number one thing that they look for and they ask, when they're looking at properties and moving into a location, is the safety forces. And if we want to increase our population residential, and we want to increase the businesses in town, then we have to continue to make sure that our safety forces have what they need.
I'm going to throw another thing out, that would come up when we get to the end. But Bob and I have been talking, we need a new safety building.
Yeah, there's a lot that.
We do, and that's something that.
That they have to work under are not right.
I personally think, and Eamonn and I have talked about it, Andrew and I have talked about it, we need to look at all of our municipal buildings for the very near future and start planning seriously.
Yeah, we're, we're working on it. We've already initiated some discussion on the old high school problem.
Which would be perfect.
So, and I'm not saying this to take away from what you're doing, because the bottom line is what happens when you're out on a call, and, and how you guys handle it. But we also, we have to plan ahead and find ways to finance that, and we think we can do that. We have, if you recall, when we did not have a bond rating, we couldn't do anything. It was, we were out of business. We couldn't even get the, sell the bonds that were being paid by the businesses for that new entrance on the 14th. We had to finance those through our water department with that. So, a lot of this, we haven't had to deal with. And it's still, in my overall picture, and I'm very pleased with the effort that council has made, and to support employees, it's the reason I came here. I did not think employees would be treated well.
Yep.
And we want to change that. But I, I want to be sure, I, I am satisfied that we should go ahead with the safety grant. I can't answer Ross' question. Specifically, I'm going to have to trust to the fact that the business that we're bringing in is going to help offset it.
I, I just want to add quickly, I was, have been at the fire department quite a bit and have talked to almost every fireman, and we've, I mentioned things about the new, which we need a building. If anyone's been inside the fire department, I don't know how they survive in there with each other for 24 hours, it is about this wide.
Now we have two women firemen.
And there, and there is no space for a woman. There's one shower, I'm over it, one shower with two shower heads, kind of weird. Anyways, when I, when we talked about that, the whole, yeah, I wanted to, they said that they would rather have, if they, they would rather have that additional person. They, the, the safety building is nice, but having that additional person, having that additional person.
Safety building is long range.
For sure, absolutely, I agree. But that, but that additional person to back them up, that additional person to help give them a break, that additional person when they're exhausted because they just got back from the 10th call of the day, that's what they, that's right now, yes.
The question was asked, how will we call us? And so we're all the total, we're heading up to six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Yep.
I'm happy to see the support that came for tonight, shows, you know, they are, they need, they're tired, and they need help. So I'm at the point.
I, I'm in full support of this, with three people, and my expectation is, we're going to fill those positions even if we don't get the grant, that's what I'm going with.
So, are you okay for me to move this out of committee? And if you guys have further questions, you got finance, you know, but again, try to reach out ahead of time if there are going to be lengthy questions or things that they're going to have to find information for. At this point, are you okay that I move it forward, Matt, for three people?
Yes.
Okay.
I see Brad has a comment.
Brad.
You're right down there, let's say for grant, we double, we let it go, we try, you try to say, look, we try to think about, yeah.
I appreciate that.
At least room for all of your budgets. We need people, I know that well, three parts of these, because the population is low, you all have so much to cover. Yeah, we could probably do three people, uh, for a grant, but just not going to hire another person. You know what I'm saying? We're really taking off money if you're going to take three people, probably, both of the people we have. So you still have a cushion for the profit or percentage of the money, okay? It'll be tiny, you can look at about five of it. So if it's a big grant, I think you can do more.
Well, we're going to look for it, and we're going to hope that we get it. My point is very simple, one, that we should be committed, whatever the data drives us to, and like I said, you convinced me a long time ago, what we need, my concern that we can afford. And if we can afford to apply for this grant, then I think we can afford somewhere down the line, maybe it won't be initially three, right off the bat, but that should be our goal. And maybe more as the city grows.
Right, absolutely.
I appreciate all the work you've done to present that, because we need that information.
Each and every one of you, thank you so much. And I am going to move this forward and into finance, okay? All right. Last item on my agenda is Chief Wallace's turn. This one is, it's for police department staffing. This has not been a secret, though. This is something that Chief Wallace has talked about back when he was doing some, adding some part-time dispatchers, I believe, he brought some ideas that he was looking for, some retirements, and he creatively wanted to change some things around. So this, I believe most of us should have been aware of, I don't know who was on council then or not, but I, I don't remember, but anyways, I'm going to turn this over to Chief Wallace.
So, we talked about this problem, so, the idea is, so the same part of the, she is, a good start for, and, right now, we have 15, 16, so the idea will be, it's going to be, it's just, it's harder to leave than it is to get back. Move that, move that back now, or maybe we got to do that later, and maybe we have a few questions, but, so it happens a lot of times, I just had a discussion, a day, a lot of times, my staff is spending, probably, this time, too, the fire department, the quick things that come up, the many times, just that, we deal with that. So there's this, that, 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 and, 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 and,
Mr. Finney explained, because they all just kind of tie together.
So with that we move forward, we provide, we provide for three different grants. The TID grant, which is the Bishop Green District, Portage County, we're trying to move forward with that. And then there was another grant. Known as six twenty nine grant. We don't have this yet in state, like Ohio, we should be getting it, they said by the end of the year. So with this, when we do receive it, we'll need to authorize an air signing contract. I'm hoping, again, I'm hoping to have it by next week, I'm not certain that we will, but with the three grants, we only have one. Actually, we have the TID in place if the mayor signs it sometime now, but we're working on the agreement. Portage County allowing the city of Atlanta to administer the grant. So there's the grant acceptance that we already have. And the grant, the document to allow the mayor to sign the city to administer it. So anyway, we'll just go down with this. So the six twenty nine grant agreement, authorizing the mayor to sign grant agreement. Then the second, uh, second item is authorizing the mayor to advertise for construction. The third one, authorizing to sign the agreement with jobs and commerce, which you guys should have in your packet. And the last one is authorizing for an agreement with Portage County to manage the TID grant internally. And when I spoke to the Portage County Engineers Office, it was at prosecutor's office for approval prior to coming to us. He felt we would have it by Monday next week. So then, if we did receive that, the last one we would be waiting for, which would be the six twenty nine grant.
What's the amount of the six twenty nine grant that goes through?
Three hundred. Yeah, the total. Think about this, the. I'm thinking, that's why, so the TID was about a hundred and eighty five thousand, the. Jobs and Commerce was a hundred and forty thousand, so the six twenty nine was, it was over three hundred thousand. Somehow, they, it all totaled about six hundred thousand.
These are all need to be in place so that we can move forward with the.
That's what all of these are for.
Yeah, Cheryl, I guess, you just refreshed my member, the U-DAG, that we just approved the nine hundred fifty thousand dollar grant from the city, correct?
That's not the, the nine, the U-JAG funds will not be the nine hundred, the nine hundred thousand is the estimate amount for the projects entirely.
Are these two separate projects then?
No, it's all the same one. So these numbers, the three sixty seven, the one forty, and the one eighty three five, those will be used first. If any amount, if the bid comes, whatever the bid's coming at, the gap is what the U-JAG will cover.
Okay. Along with the cost of the water line, you don't see the cost of the water line, which for simple math is a hundred thousand. You don't see the water line on, in your packet. And then the sanitary cost was another a hundred thousand, but talking to Ray Harner. We're going to just install enough for the sanitary to get the road there. And then when he sells lots along the cemetery in the future, they will be required to extend the sanitary. We don't know how to build the sanitary because we don't know who's gonna buy which lot. There's no reason to build it all the way up to Chestnut Street and have one business buy all of it. And so, we'll, we'll get it underneath the road, so that's why it's, you, you don't know a hundred percent of where it costs.
So this, so the nine hundred thousand dollar estimate does not include water or sanitary?
That did include water and sanitary. Correct, taking the water and sanitary out brings the price to seven thirty four.
Thank you for all that. Any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and move all four of those items forward. A couple of items that bring up for discussion. First one actually is in regard to the bricks for South Freedom Street. And again, I'll let Mr. Finney kind of explain this, what direction he's, he's thinking you may possibly want to go with this.
So as I delve further into this. And looking at the time of all of our projects, so two water line projects, both have brick, they're, a brick street with asphalt over it. The water line's gonna be in the road, so boy, it just sounds so simple. During water line construction, we're gonna pull up field bricks and reuse them, it's not that simple because the one project we can't start, we won't be authorized to start until July. The other one, we're waiting for the county commissioners to authorize construction. So we also know that it could take six to eight weeks to order a water line pipe. So we haven't advertised these projects, so it, so it's, it's almost at this point not an option to incorporate this year that brick. I do, I, I did receive a price from a company in Canton, Belden Brick, who will manufacture these bricks for us, to the tune of about a dollar fifty, a dollar seventy for brick. Looking at about twenty seven thousand bricks from Main Street to Maple Lane. We can purchase this, again, there's, there's manufacturing time. So my thought was, we're gonna purchase about six thousand square foot of brick, the city will, we'll have them delivered and stored on, somewhere in the city. But as Mark Bone is looking at his water line projects, what we have to do with the bricks we take out of the streets. Palatize them, first of all, remove them, stop breaking them, the contractor that it is. So there was a project at North Kent, there was a project that Kent did a couple of years ago, utilizing their own staff to do a lot of this work. So their own staff, they don't have to quantify costs. So the staff was literally cleaning the bricks, recalatizing, then taking from wherever they did this back to the job site. We don't have that with our staff. We're gonna be paying contractors to touch these bricks four, five, six different times until they get re-incorporated. So of course, the costs continue to increase. Little sidebar, we can mill and overlay a street for about two, two and a half dollars a square foot. Just to purchase brick, it's a dollar a square foot. So that's beside the point, we made the decision to go with brick. What I'm saying is, it's hard to quantify the cost of this project. One way to quantify it is to purchase all new brick and redo Freedom Street with all new brick. I know that's gonna make some people unhappy that we're not incorporating, we can still incorporate some of the old brick. Dr. Calpe's idea possibly is put down crosswalks with the old brick. We can go extra wide crosswalks to use up more brick, but if we want to get this project done at a reasonable cost, I think this might be the best option.
I'm confused, is the best option, reusing?
Using all new brick, incorporating the existing brick in the crosswalk.
But you're talking about places where you're gonna be digging up some bricks, and, but are you saying at this point?
Well, what, what, what? We can still dig the bricks up, but they would be dug up with an excavator, put in a dump truck, and taken somewhere in the city and dumped.
Okay.
And then we can still use those, maybe in this park across the street, they can be incorporated in, into those types of projects.
Because the cost to refurbish the old brick is just.
And the timing.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
There's a lot of factors that go in, unknowns that go into that.
And what is the problem with new bricks?
Well, it was, it, it seemed that the residents and other folks in town wanted to reuse the existing bricks.
Are they gonna know?
My opinion, my opinion, no, but.
Right. See, I didn't think that was part of the discussion, maybe I missed that, I didn't know that there was a historic value in the brick themselves, if it's the same material, the same kind of whatever, same look.
It made difference.
Some had even requested if many were broken that they.
Well, if they're watching the TV, they'll know.
Yeah, there you go now. We could've just not told them, right?
What is the biggest difference that we're looking at from new brick to doing the refurbishing and reutilizing of the bricks that we had discussed before?
Well, that's, it, it's gonna end up being what a contractor is gonna wanna charge us, but we were looking at probably, we were looking at at least two dollars a square foot to remove. And then probably another four, five dollars a square foot to put back in the road. So one of, one of, one of the items that Belden Brick can do when they palatize these new bricks. There is a machine that literally could take one row at a time and, and put it in the street from, right off the truck.
Right.
Not to say that the contractor that bids our project will have that ability, but you know, there's certainly a way to be more competitive. With the old brick, that's not an option, it's touching every single brick, putting every brick in.
Seems like a good solution. Get some of the bricks to the residents who.
But you're trying to then refurbish the evening count with the proceeds.
Twenty five, how was the break?
Yep.
I've had battles with flagstone sidewalk in my past, and I've learned a lesson.
Yeah, they're getting me for granted.
Anyway, if, if, if city council is acceptance to the, has acceptance of this, then I will move forward, we're gonna purchase a bunch of brick, and we're gonna get started, see how it goes.
Just as long as we're keeping the old brick and reusing them, I think that's the big thing that.
They will be kept in town, and something will be done with them.
Okay.
Just expensive.
I understand.
Yeah.
I do have a question, if we change to this, which I'm all for, which is fine. Will we still do it on a three-year plan, or if we buy all the brick at one time, are we, will we intend to do more earlier?
Well, this year, I would like to just do this first section, possibly next year we'll finish.
Okay.
And see how this goes.
Okay.
So have we changed this from a discussion item to a?
Is there any action?
No action.
No, there's no action.
So it's still informational, but a little bit of change in the thought process, just to make this, this project more cost-effective and time-effective.
And keep in mind, we're still doing curbs and acreage.
And we are. Right. Thank you. And then just the last item that was brought to my attention for some of this discussion. Is in regard to the storm we had Monday night and the. The plowing of the snow, there was a handout given out, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look through it. But if there's any, any questions on the process, the way things work, it looks like it's. Laid out in here extremely well, but if, I'm sure if there's other questions that we may, may not be able to answer tonight. We can, we can definitely check into them, so.
Thank you for, and Chuck for, you know, getting this, so at least help when we get these calls to at least, you know, let people know. This is, you know, what's gonna be done, this is the way it's going, because I could not find that on the, when I looked for it online, so.
Is it online?
Not yet, just the sidebar, sorry. She was gonna, they were gonna get this put online, I don't know, you didn't, they didn't.
The thing, the thing residents don't wanna hear from us is, I don't know.
Yeah, if they don't wanna hear, I don't know, and they don't want to hear that we're doing the best that we can.
That's why I thought the map would be helpful for you.
I mean, we weren't the only city that was, a lot of other cities are struggling with getting.
There's a lot of cities that are still struggling.
Absolutely.
The, the biggest, probably, and one of the things that aggravated me the most was a lot of the complaints that I got. They were comparing us to the township, and you know, right on the other side of the gate, the township is clean at six AM, and it's maintained to stay clean. You know, over the twenty-four hour period, and I explained to them, well, the, the township doesn't have to maintain a lot of their main roads. Because they have help from the state and the county level for plowing that we don't have, and they didn't wanna hear that. It, it doesn't matter what we do in situations like this, there's a lot of, nobody's gonna be perfectly happy. But I think if they understand the process and what we're dealing with, and that's what I, I tried to talk to people last night and say, you know, we have three trucks out. And ironically, one of the trucks actually got stuck and broke down in Anabar at eleven o'clock last night. So people got to see it firsthand and see what they're dealing with, but people, they just don't wanna hear it. It's, it's all about them, and then once we did get plowed, the next complaint that started rolling in was that the snow was in the end of their driveways.
We can't lift the plow every time.
Right, it's, it's just, and so, I mean, I understand frustrations of, I had a gentleman who said he was a first responder that got called out at one o'clock in the morning. To a call, it took him forty minutes to get from Anabar to State Route fourteen. Once he got to fourteen, at least the roads were passable, they weren't great, but they were passable. When he returned home at five A.M., the next morning, all the other areas that he came through from Soling to Ravanna were very passable. He passed plows, he, everything else, he got into the city limits, and it didn't look like a road was touched.
And Cheryl, in the street department's defense?
They're doing great, they're doing great.
I just wanted to say, and Chuck put that in here, like, his workers got to work, and I know for a fact, there's a son that lives in Deerfield, out in the country. So if they can get out, then I find it hard to believe there.
And I'll go back and forth on that because my husband and my son pushed four vehicles out of the middle of our road. I have a Jeep that has a little bit of a lift on it and some bigger tires that does off-roading. I did not attempt to go down my road yesterday because I did not want to be one of them out there pushing it. It, but it didn't matter for me, I'm not saying that, I'm saying, a lot of people have cars, and not SUVs or trucks. And I understand, especially, we had a couple, we had a nurse and a doctor that couldn't get out, we had, you know, another nurse that did. It, it's, I get that, people get to work, some people don't, it depends on their vehicle. You get a snow like this once every ten years, you don't buy a vehicle specifically for that. I know our guys did a great job with what they had to work with. My concern is that, from the sounds of it, we're downing equipment, we're still leaving on a truck that we ordered, what, a year ago?
Personnel.
And we're down staff.
Because they can only do four guys per twelve-hour shift, those four go home, three hours, and then the other four.
The other four, and that's.
So we had, I mean, there was two people during this event that refused to come in.
How many?
And then there was one that said, well, he wasn't gonna come, I won't go there, but. So there's a lot of different scenarios and that everyone doesn't realize, and I get that, but I think our street department does the best job that they can do with. The equipment that they have, they have old equipment. And when you look at, you know, like Akron and Cleveland, they're going to do the same thing we are, because they have a lot more people, a lot better equipment, so.
Even Streetsboro has twenty-three trucks.
That makes us look that bad.
No, I don't think, I don't think.
Even Streetsboro has twenty-three trucks.
Hence, got about the same, to say that we have, you know, a lot less than that, and that's my concern. As council, I think it's our job, our priority, to make sure that our street department is up to staff and has the proper equipment, just like our fire department and everybody else.
I think they're doing the best job they can, like you said, and I won't take that away, I think that you have eight people up here that are elected officials, and anyway, we can get the communication out to residents who are asking us questions. Utilize us the best, to your, whatever, whatever you need to get the information, not good or bad.
Well, that was, that was the purpose of this, you know, when I talked to Chuck today, you know, I wanted to get, like, it from, right from the horse's mouth, you know? She's the one that deals with this every day, so he did this, I did the max for you guys, so like, to get calls at home, you can look and say, well, hey, this is a primary or secondary area. You know, and in the past, I, it, it could take, they did go this time getting into the residential areas, but there's been times that. Like back in the day when there was a lot of, we had a lot of snow events, that they wouldn't get there for a couple of days or something, so. It's just, it's priority-driven, and people just have to understand that, and it is what it is.
Well, I think too, at least in Anabar, and I did turn it back to a few different people, I've been there for eighteen years, and I can remember back in, it's two thousand nine or two thousand ten, we had huge snow and ice storms. And we literally were stuck in our house for three days, but to try to explain that to people that are newer to the neighborhood, they don't hear it, they don't, you know, they don't wanna know that.
Yeah, and tonight, so the crews worked until seven P.M. tonight, tomorrow, they're gonna go back to their regular eight-hour shift, so they're gonna be doing the cleanup. Like all the huge piles of snow, you know, like, um, and then I went somewhere today, and I didn't say anything, but someone was saying, it was a business, I was in one business, and they were talking about. They go, we can't believe that the city hasn't been around to do the sidewalk shit, it's like.
Seriously? Oh, they used to drive the tractors, I, I know, I remember the tractors.
We have one tractor.
Yeah.
Plus, would you rather have your roads done or the sidewalks?
And it used to also be part of the responsibility of the business owners to do in front of their business owners.
We have more than six sixty, that it's the resident's responsibility and the business, to keep their sidewalks clear.
Honestly, even though we had the ability to use those, those aren't gonna push through this amount of snow at this point anyways.
Right.
So we're not gonna be able to do that, that thing's not gonna do anything.
And when we do do the sidewalks, with the one pile that we have, they do around the schools first.
Yeah.
And then if they get, you know, like, into the neighborhoods that they do, but that's not a high priority, they're more or less doing it, I don't know.
I think the people in the neighborhoods.
Because they don't have to be on it.
I mean, we do ours.
Well, according to ordinance, they should be doing their own, so.
Thank you so much for sharing the information, it's helpful.
Having the information is, is very wonderful.
Yeah, because like Andrew said, it's, and even us up here at work, it's the worst thing you can do is when you get a call, it's like, well, I don't know.
Right.
If we don't know, we say, well, we'll find out for you, we'll get back with you, but that's the worst thing that a resident wants to hear, it's like, we don't know, because it makes them feel like, well, we don't, they don't care. You know, and, and that's certainly not the case, so we thought that this would help everybody, because you guys get a lot of calls as we do, you got her Julie's phone today. I'm glad she did such a good job today, but.
Anyway, so thanks again for putting that together, thanks Chuck for helping out with that.
Yeah, I'll pass that along to you.
Uh, do we have a management update?
Is this the last committee or is there another?
One more.
I know I lost track. Not specific to that, I just have a couple things.
Okay.
I'll wait until our committees are done.
Okay.
Before you close Streets and Sidewalks, I'm sorry, I had to step out for a minute. I do wanna just say, under the Streets and Sidewalks Committee, it is really exciting that we are building a new street. That Rayanne, I mean, if you talk about things improving, going up, when was the last time we put in a new street in the city of this size and length? That's a sign of progress, I, I think it's just great, I just wanna say that again, building a new street, wonderful, go get them.
Enterprise Parkway, we did it, I think it was oh four.
Oh four, so like, eighteen years, eighteen years since we've done that, so it's great. Seven fourteen, I will adjourn Streets and Sidewalks Committee.
Okay, here's seven fourteen, and I will open up the planning committee meeting, in a twist of irony, I think this will be pretty short. Uh, we have two items on the agenda, the first one, I don't think there's much to report on, at least not from my end, I haven't heard from Kent, they, they haven't provided me with their RFQ as of yet. They had a couple of other things kind of come up, so Bob, I don't know, has the design review commission met recently, are they working on an RFQ?
We, we did meet last week, but we did not have a quarrel.
Oh.
So we did not meet last week.
Yeah, not technically. All right, well.
There hasn't been much discussion.
Yeah, let's, so it's kind of been a holding pattern, but when I get the information from Kent, I will forward it on to you and the commission, and so. Uh, we can get back to talking about hiring a consultant and what that means. Um, so the next item on the agenda, also for discussion, is council meeting times, is this for, Andrew, I think you asked to have this one?
Yeah, it's a general question for council and the administration, we, we had brief discussions about aligning all of our meetings, committee. Committee of the whole, and then the regular meeting, right now, if, one of the suggestions was six P.M., so I wanted to throw that out there and see if that might work. A six P.M. meeting across the board for all council meetings, does that, and maybe we discuss it next week, um, going into February, we can take a look at it, or March, Mayor. Uh, to see if there's any other meetings that might be a conflict with what we're doing, Shade Tree is the one that comes to mind. But I, I'm just kinda throwing that out there, does that work, is that late enough? Uh, five thirty seems to work for committees, I know it's cutting it close for a lot of people who are coming from work, but does six P.M. give everybody enough time to get here, and is that ideal, I guess?
It could be great to have the same time to start every week, that's for sure.
Well, I guess, if you're just talking about, like, the committees, I think that's fine. I worry if we change the regular meeting to six, that might be a bit of an imposition for people who may wanna attend, since that is kind of prime dinner hour. I just wonder if that, you know, tradition, and not to say that we should never change the way we've always done things, I think it's, it's worth discussing, at least the regular meeting, because that's where everything really happens. Uh, I agree with changing, I have, I'm one that has, can have trouble getting here by five thirty, so moving the committee meeting to six works fine with me, and the committee of the whole is another committee, I'm, I'm for that. I think a little discussion, at least, the council regular meeting might be in order. Would you wanna have that discussion now, or are we looking at the future? Well, I think the other part is, you know, we, we often rely upon sitting people to come to our meetings, so I think we should, you know, make an inquiry there, whether there's any imposition or problem changing at times. My experience has been, when someone comes to a board meeting or a city council meeting, it's a special event, and they're coming for a special reason, it's not like they're on it every, every.
The only person in the room.
Yeah, right, and, and so, yeah, and so, I, I, I think someone would be able to adjust schedules to come at six o'clock.
Yeah.
And I, and I, just as a preliminary thought on it, that's my thought.
And you do have people that are business-minded, you know, business people, NDS was here tonight, perfect example, they leave their office at five. Coming here and being here for a five thirty meeting is much easier than the ones that have to leave town, to go home, get something to eat, turn around and come back for a meeting. So I think the closer to business hours that we make it, they can go home and eat dinner after, if they're here for a special reason.
And Andrew, I would just have a conflict on those nights I have my Shade Tree, they start at five thirty, but what I do now is, like, if a committee meeting would happen. Follow on this, like, I usually have my meetings the third Monday, if, if committee meetings conflict with that, then I adjust my Monday accordingly, but. Whatever you guys decide, I could kind of work around it, or if I don't even have anything on for that evening, you know, on committees, I mean, it wouldn't be an issue for me anyways, so.
And I, this has just been brought up a couple of times, so I wanted to have the conversation.
Well, especially in the winter, seven o'clock sometimes feels like, it's like, I should be in bed.
In summertime too, you know, the night's leaving when it's still a little maybe light out. It's summertime too, you know, the nice leaving when it's still a little maybe light out versus.
Yeah, wow, yeah.
We'll take a look at your schedule, I guess, and moving into February or March, um, we can discuss, I guess, aligning those meetings if it's six o'clock and then the regular on seven. Or all of them at six.
I think all of them at six makes sense, because you're right. I think that if someone wants to be here, they're going to adjust their schedule to come here, whether it's five, six or seven. If they have something they really want to share.
Is the only member of the public here have any concerns about us normalizing our meeting schedule to six o'clock? No? Okay.
Is there anything you want to say to Mayor or is, do you want to have the discussion?
Is Rob done?
I am done. Is there a management update?
Oh, I'm just a couple of things I want to mention. Uh, I have a request for an event. And it's, uh, June, uh, 10th. Uh, on the eighteenth of June. And they're trying to set up a situation somewhat similar to Luna affair in terms of shutting down streets. Uh, of course, they're not sure how many people they will get at this point in time. The reason I'm bringing this up to, to you is, uh, that, uh, we have not taken a stand on that holiday. Right. So I think that I need to know one way or the other, uh, how we want to treat this, this holiday. That's not going to affect the fact, the fact that they've made this application and I, I intend to sign it. But I've held it until I had a chance to bring this up to council because there are some loose ends on that. And if you're like me, and I, I hate to admit this, but until last year, I didn't know a thing about Juneteenth. But it's, uh, uh, it's got to made a holiday rather quickly once it was discovered. And, uh, uh, I look for them to have some success, uh, uh, with getting a crowd down. It did, we did have to adjust, um, art on Main Street. Uh, that, that will be the weekend before. Uh, Chelsea took it to Main Street and they're electing to do that on the 11th, I think it is.
It's on the 18th. It's on the same day. So that is, oh, they moved it? Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah. That's just, by way of information, I need to, we need to know how, how, whether we're going to make that a holiday or not.
Well, I made the suggestion at the last council meeting during our remarks section and maybe we could look at it. And I think it's, uh, appropriate for the personnel committees. If it's a holiday, that means it's an employee's day off.
And it, and it's a little complicated also because it's one of 11 federal holidays and the negotiated agreements call for some of the federal holidays to be paid, but I don't know if we pay all of them. Right now, for example, do we play, pay Columbus Day?
Yes.
We do.
Yeah.
So do we do all 11?
That's, I, I'm expecting Columbus Day to eventually get the boat.
Right, yeah. But, but right, I didn't know what that situation was. And I don't know if the city actually has somewhere in what they do, whether they formally say, we recognize these holidays.
It's in our code.
It's in our code.
I wrote it down before last meeting, but, um, yeah. But the interesting thing about Juneteenth, and the mayor is absolutely correct, it kind of came upon us pretty quickly. Uh, it is a state holiday.
The state has it.
Kent State has it off. It's on a Sunday, so we get the Monday following off. And I brought it up because it was listed as a meeting, a night when we have meetings. Um, but the way it was structured, um, the governor signed the bill, but municipalities were on their own. And there's a couple of options. One is to make it a formal holiday, which means if, like this year, we did it before the Juneteenth comes up, they would have the Monday following off. Others just recognize it. If it falls on a weekend, they already have the day off. So there are some options, but I don't know. I, I, this, I believe this is an important holiday for, um, for, for visual reasons. I think there's some obvious reasons why I think we should recognize it.
You can always, I know some, I think the county at Summit, they do a floating holiday. So it's not necessarily on that date, um, but they have a, a paid day for that and they can pick which day they want, so.
Oh, yeah, I don't know about that, but in our code, it says if the holiday falls on a Saturday, then we have the Friday off. If it's a Sunday, they have the Monday off, so.
I, I think, yeah, I think we, we probably need to do some looking at it. I didn't realize that we paid Washington's birthday.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know what.
Yeah, we pay Washington's birthday, yeah.
The president's day is always combined between Washington and.
Yeah, and Wyndham.
Sure, they pay for half of Washington.
Yeah, so, yeah, so something to be discussed.
Have any of the unions approached you to, because I imagine those 11 holidays are listed in contracts.
Negotiation, you can bet that's coming up.
But since it's after the holiday this year, um, I guess my, my thought was have any of them come to you to try and do an MOU to the contract to get that added.
No. But thanks for telling me. Uh, that one other thing that just came up again today, um, that was, uh, Mr. Wallace and, uh, Mr. Chapel and, uh, about providing ambulance service to the training camp in the arsenal. I mentioned this a while ago, long enough ago that I'd almost forgotten about it. But it turns out there's a specific problem that happens with it. They were working with Wyndham and Wyndham quit doing it. We, uh, do the dispatching for Wyndham. So when, and their phones, the nine-one-one is, their phones are all set to come to us, our dispatch center. And the chief want to know what do we tell them or what do we do? If it comes here, we, and we know Wyndham has sent us a letter saying they're not doing that anymore. Uh, they don't want the dispatchers to have to make a decision what to do with it. Uh, what we decided at our meeting was that if we get a call in the next couple of weeks, we'll honor it. I, we're trying to get in touch again with the powers that be. And it seems to be the people that make this decision are nowhere near the arsenal. They're either in Columbus or they're in Washington. And, uh, I don't have a lot of hope of getting much back from them, uh, in two weeks. Uh, but at a certain point, we're going to have to decide. Now, they generally, they ran about a dozen calls a year. Chief chased down some information on it. Uh, we did have an agreement with them at one time. And, uh, we were slow on responding to it. And this was, oh, I'm talking about a long time ago. Uh, and so Wyndham stepped up and they went with Wyndham with that. I know that they're checking with two other places, but they just want them to do the parts that's in Trumbull County. Um, and one of them was Newton Falls, who is, has no interest in doing it. The other one is McDonald's or.
Now, probably Lord's County.
Southern.
Uh, no, but there is McDonald's, I think somewhere over there. It's very small. So I don't know whether they even have paramedics, uh, at that particular place in time. So this is something, we'll probably have to make a decision on when I see what kind of a contract they send back. I really think they're working at, that they think that we might want to do this for free to honor what they, what they are doing out there with their training and stuff. I never approached it like that. I sent them copies of the old contracts that we had and it was charged according to what unit went out, how many people were on it, how long they were there, with a minimum of a two-hour call. I, I, I'm a little torn with it. I feel like we need to offer the service, but I, I don't think it should be free. I don't think we should have to beat that cost. And like you say, 12 trips a year, it doesn't sound like it would be a whole lot, but, you know, once again, we get into, they're out there. That, that means they're not here, uh, to answer calls.
Yes, so that, that instead of a two-hour, seems like it could be closer to three. I mean, uh.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
I have to tell you, the contracts get written by them.
Yeah, there's no way to deal with a defense department of defense.
With that, so I'm waiting to see again, we can say yes or no. At that point in time, but I wanted you to be aware of this. It did not die in natural death, so.
One of the things to keep in mind with the way that they're rebuilding out there, the portion, um, of the arsenal that we would get calls for are more the training site. So God forbid that somebody has cardiac arrest, maybe. But technically, the odds are kind of slimmer because they have their PT test and all of that that they're supposed to be doing. So it could be, you know, they're, they're going across the field and they roll their ankle and go into a hole.
Yeah, they say basically it's broken arms, broken legs, counts of things.
The area that the majority of the population on that base are at one time, are right down on the corner of five thirty, four and five, which would be the other end that we wouldn't be responding to.
Yeah. Now, quite honestly, they'd like us to do the whole thing.
Right.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Oh, I, I, I'm gonna stop there.
Okay.
I had eight o'clock in the pool and I'm hoping I lose tonight.
We could chat a little bit longer. Actually, no, I'm going to adjourn the planning committee. It is seven thirty-two. We're done.